At this point, I will bring the special meeting for of council for the budget purposes to order. And the first item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please? And second back, Council Whitmarsh. All those in favor? Pose and that carries. Thank you. The one item we have on our agenda is continuing the presentation from staff regarding the 2021 draft. Budget. So Mr. Backen, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, your worship. Special credit to Sandra and Sam for the continued efforts in terms of moving the budget process forward. Where we're at today, just keeping the end in mind is we seek to. Go through a presentation, same format as we've utilized before, a little bit of additional information. And keeping the end in mind, the output we're looking for is is for some direction of council in terms of bringing back. Some resolutions that would authorize the budget process to proceed. Or some bylaws to authorize the budget process to proceed. That's the the objective. And of course, in that process, we're looking to ensure we encapsulate. Any directions, comments, or or. I guess the other items the council wishes for us to to include in the budget. So specifically, one of the matters that we've noted. Is the continued review of the prioritization of the capital program. What we seek to do is to get to a situation where we have envelopes for capital. Envelopes for the water, envelopes for the Fraser Valley Regional Library. That we can actually allow the budget to proceed, but to still by direction of council. Do some modifications to those as we go through the process. So for example. The water is a good example. We can devise a utility bylaw. That will actually allow us to go either way with the proviso that we do not proceed unless council provides further direction. Likewise, with the capital budget, we could proceed. By simply knowing the envelope as presented in one of the presentation options. And allowing us to go forward with that. So it's it's really trying to to keep the process advancing. But allowing still council to have oversight input as we go through it. But we are mindful that we're now at the first day of February in 2021, only 11 months to go in this year. So time is marching on. So with that introduction, I'll ask Sandra to bring up the first slide to share that on the screen. And there won't be any real surprises to this. We've simply added. The February first, I guess, concept, I use it carefully. Because as you may recall, on January the 25th. We had a item for consideration whereby we we added five police officers back in, if you will. So. Just to give us a bit of history, on January the 18th, we. We were saying perhaps we don't add any police officers. The input from council was, well, we know we should add some. And what if we added? Five in. Well, in January, the 25th, we added five in, but said. We have to take the funding from some other place. And one of the concepts discussed, just to pick on them for the moment, was recreation, culture and parks. Well. The feedback we got on the 25th was, well, let's not do that. Let's see what it would be. Perhaps if we didn't take the funding away from RCP or anywhere else. What does that do to our bottom line? Well, the bottom line within changes. From the 3.79 of January, the 25th to 4.42 for the February the first. So just to recap our history, because it's a bit convoluted, let's take a moment and follow along if you like, but don't feel compelled to. The December 14th option allowed for three police officers. January, the 11th option allowed for two police officers, so down one. January, the 18th took us down to zero, so down three. The 25th took us back up to five, but with funding internally elsewhere. And then February, the first took us back up to five with funding being. Taken externally, that is not to not from any other division. So as we look then to the. The bottom line of this next slide, we simply then. Continue with our previous format. And we look at that and we see where the changes actually are. And I'll let Sandra take us through the next slide, and then we can jointly do. The remaining two slides. So Sandra, you've been the expert on this one. So if you can just take us through the changes.
Thank you, Mark. So we have all of the notations from the first page. Detailed out here. So we have moved library expenses to the library levy, which is a savings of 0.6 on the universal budget. We have the adjusted cert, the. Levels for the recreation for facilities that are open is at 1.75. That is unchanged again from the previous presentation. We have the recreation reductions in revenue of 2.35 for those services that are not yet open. And that is again unchanged from the last presentation. Then the 0.17 is the reduct or is the increase in growth. That we had previously noted. And then we have further reductions, the RCMP adjustments, which are some additional revenue that we're using from reserves. To fund the policing increase that we have to adjust for for this year. For the 10 officers that we brought on. We then reduced the paving discretionary budget from 500,000 to 250,000. We deferred all of the discretionary staffing for a July first start, so that's 50%. We took out the CPO lease, 226,000, as that's moving to later in the year. Increased our building permit revenue based on historical numbers. And then we're using a further $475,000 from prior year surplus to fund, help fund our contribution to surplus. Then we've added back in five RCMP officers for the full 12 months at $884,000. To bring us to our total of 4.42.
Have a question.
Yes, thank you. I have two questions. One is around the RCMP. And this five that we have in here now, this is over and above the 10 that we approved last year, which would make it therefore. Am I correct in saying that that's 15 officers over two years? That's the first question. And the second question is, where in here is the? What happened to the arborist that we were sort of suggesting? Is that? Is that somewhere in the staff changes six months? Or where where does that show up now? We had talked about doing that for the tree protection bylaw. I'm just wondering where that shows up here.
So your worship, that that's correct. The officer then complement would be 15 over two years, 10 in 2020 and five in 2021. And the we'll call it the tree support staff, which is an arborist and another party is included. Really in the in the budget. And you'll note that we defer staff changes for six months. So we're. Thinking that they'll come on partway through the year. And that means that the. This we're saving half a year, which means by implication, they're contained for the balance of the year.
Okay, that's helpful. I noticed that there are currently two. Arborist jobs that have been advertised currently for staff. Is that is that related to this conversation? Or is that that's unrelated? The two that are being advertised right now in the township for two arborists.
I believe I know for certain one is an existing position, but Mr. Seppi, if you're out there, perhaps you can. Can elaborate on the the two postings. I'm not certain about the second one.
Thank you, your worship. Both positions are existing vacancies. None have no postings have have been posted yet. No vacancies have been posted yet with regard to the the position that is currently being discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you and carry on. Thanks.
So your your worship, I. I worked on, I came across this, this, I guess, diagram, if you will, and and shared it with Sandra, who then actually was able to. Elaborate and explain it a bit better. What this represents, we think, is a good synopsis of the challenges that councils and staff face, because there's. These concentric ring circles, which which kind of indicate the parameters of of our challenges. What I mean by that is one, one circle says, well, I want stable services. And how do you achieve that? Well, it's either through, you know, additional revenue through taxes or additional revenue through growth. If however, a party wants low growth, and then how do you achieve that? Well, you achieve that then through. You know, high taxes or service cuts. And if you want low taxes, then how do you maintain your service levels? Well, through more growth or for service cuts. The part that's most challenging is the area in between where it says that does not exist. Because that's the classic challenge we all face when we seek to add services. But are unable to find either the the revenue from taxation from growth or from reducing in other areas. And we thought it was just a an interesting perspective, because it. It around it, and this was some of Sandra's work, shows some of the challenges we have with wage increases, demands on protective services. Inflation, taxpayer expectations, external factors and impacts of COVID. We thought it really provided a nice, a nice way to to see the challenge right in that center area. And then, as we look to other communities, we see them are they're beginning to reflect those challenges. And Sandra, if you'd like to take us quickly through. The the chart, it's interesting. And if you have any other additional information, because it's changing all the time, please feel free to share.
This is the latest that we know of at this time. Obviously, most of these are not final numbers, but these are the ones that they're sort of publishing. So we're ranging, you know, on the lower end from 2.9, which was Surrey, but that also included. Or in addition to that, there is a the parcel tax went from 100 to $300 per parcel. I don't have that much information on the other ones. The other low one would be co quitlam. But they're ranging up to Richmond came in last week announcing 5.68 with some increases in protective services included in that.
So your worship, the the point is simply to show what's going on in the environment. Sometimes that helpful doesn't mean any of those options are are right for us. We've looked at the. The levy model for infrastructure, and we had a good discussion on that. And you know, that's not right for us, at least not at this time. We looked at some of the idea of service cuts and and we, you know, acknowledge that those are always a challenge and. You know, those are not right at at this time. We've looked at a bit of a restructuring, which we partially are able to do. Again, we're we're also heard the comments, but what about the overhang next year? If we commit to something, what does that mean? As we saw last year, and in part, it was exacerbated by COVID. Last year, we saw that we we postponed and deferred some of the increases, or for example, to the 10 police officers. We also engaged in some debt to acquire property, all excellent long term moves, but things which cause complications. So we. Were trying to make that up in a COVID year. Fortunately, as we said, we do have some of the. Funding from the provincial government for COVID. But yes, we recognize that's a one year. So in our latest modeling, we've said, well, if we're going to do the five police officers, if that's a big if. We'll try to build the funding in for the entire year. And that's, I think, what the numbers actually included in the in the revised amount. We're also sensitive to, though, that the taxpayers are going through a tough time. So we look at. Trying to reduce the expenditures where we can, but we're limited by the the overhang we've experienced and the. It remains an ongoing challenge that we try to tackle every day. Now, departing then the substance and going to the process where we're at now, that is, we've had our, you know, our our options from December the 14th to February the first. We've now concluded the the McIntosh session. Well, I shouldn't say concluded, but we concluded the strategic priorities part of the McIntosh session. Where we talked about what our priorities were. And just as a refresher, they included. Continued work on our arts, sports and entertainment district. Working on budget guidance to include debt management in 2022 modeling. To include reconciliation of the water policy, the method and pricing, which. That's being left for a presentation from Metro Vancouver. But in the interim. We can build a bylaw that's resilient enough to allow. Allow either way to proceed and make sure the council has the control not to make the determination until we've got to that point. We still have to work on our our library structure overall. To make sure that we address the growing needs of the community. And of course, that's something that is a bit helpful, because the library levy stands alone. But it is something the council, of course, has to be very vigilant on. And then finally, our COVID recovery, our community impact analysis and. A number of other things as well that come into play, but that that helps us in as we go forward to shape the the budget for you. So as as we've now removed some of the constraints that we're dealing with, in terms of what the process required. We're now at the point where there's two options. Council can now give some thoughts, perhaps even get to a motion in terms of what should be brought forward for further consideration. Or also the process, because as I mentioned previously, we're mindful that while we. We have a capital program, council may wish to adjust some of the priorities in that capital program. Which is understandable. But again. What we're trying to do is bring forward a budget that has an envelope to take into account the spending allocated towards infrastructure. Maintenance, renewal and expansion. And Sandra mentioned our target, based on council policy and direction this year was. About $8 million. So even though we're using a bit of funding here from from prior year's surplus, I think it's around $450,000. We're trying to stay within those parameters. So your worship, that's a. That's where we're at at the moment. And one suggestion in terms of proceeding would be. For council to have a dialogue or discussion and probably focusing. Mostly but not exclusively on the number of officers they wish to see and. And then pick a presentation date for us to try to refine and bring back, so there could be more discussion and debate. So. That would be an option, but your worship, you may have other other thoughts on that as well.
Great. Well, thank you very much. So appreciate this. No staff of retired taking back all the comments and council and. And bringing options for us. I really do appreciate that. And a lot of work goes on behind the scenes. So I'm going to open up to questions from. Council, and then perhaps we can look towards a motion to give some direction to staff. Counsel Ferguson.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to ask if again, are we still, I know councillor Whitmarsh mentioned, are we still juggling a bit with the five officers? Or could it be two, three or four or even five, if I may answer my first question?
Yes, so the options that Mr. Backen has shown us show. Show the last two show five officers in both of those, the January 25th and February 1st. Certainly, council could reduce that or increase it if they will, but it is. At their option, these are the five that we've been working with, so.
Because it used to be that when you asked, we asked for 10, I don't know if we got our 10 yet from last year, and we asked for five. It used to be you had to kind of wait for them. But now that Surrey is kind of moving forward with their own detachment or own police force. There may be a lot of RCMP officers available right away, if I may throw a chair to that.
Yeah, Mr. Backen.
Your worship, thank you. The 2020, we requisitioned the 10 officers. That usually means they would all arrive in October in in an ideal world. That they did not all arrive in October. By that point, it took a bit longer. Last information I had is, I think, seven or eight or so had been built in. But of course. As we've discussed, we often operate at less than a full complement because of leaves and illnesses that occur within the members themselves. It. Provides with a bit of a surplus. So they're continuing to build on that. And our challenge is, and as councillor Ferguson suggested, is. The Surrey situation. The Surrey situation is very interesting, because it could be that the Surrey change allows for enough. Officers or a number of officers to be freed up, that we could go to a full complement very quickly. So we have a bit of trepidation of a for trying to project too much of a surplus in it because of the unknown. But we do know after one month, Surrey has not yet changed. So it's going to take a while for that to occur. So to the original question, the we've shown scenarios with zero. We've also shown scenarios with five. It's really, I think, providing the overview in terms of what direction we wish to go in, and then we can go and refine that and bring that back to council.
Yeah. And so and also my last, my next question, I looked at the. The numbers from other, the and I thank you for providing those for the tax increases for other jurisdictions. And again. You know, Surrey is kind of like an anomaly, because. Do you have any idea what their tax increase would be if you factored in the door, the door fee, if I may?
Your worship, by our calculation, it was, it's a bit tricky, but I think I would say it's between. Two and a quarter and two and a half percent is what the effect would be overall. Now, again, that's an average because of the. Higher ranges, it's less and the lower ranges, it's more. But that's the number we've been working from.
So that would be they'd be between four and 5% or something. And I guess they got other costs as well in the in the future. They've got other cost. I I know that looking at Langley City, we like to try to close it possible to them as well. So there's things we have to kind of. Should I get get through to fight, you know, the COVID's been a tough thing and it's been hard on our citizens. But. We have to be careful that we're not left behind by other districts. Thank you.
You, Council Arnesson.
Ah, yes, thank you, worship. And through you to Mr. Backen or or Ms. Ralph. I was looking, if we could just go back to the prior slide, because that's when I put my hand up. I was wondering if council could be provided with further details about what the tax rate increases were. For, yes, that one. Thank you. So that suggests 2021, that's a snapshot. But I would find it more helpful to know, for example, what their taxes were in 2020. Because like I'm certain, the township of Langley, others did. May have altered their budget, but really doesn't change anything except for the need and the consideration for. The businesses and local residents. So I'm wondering, for example, if we're looking at comparators, this is helpful to a degree. But I don't know, for example, you know, maybe North Vancouver had their prior property tax rate at a 1.5. So I'm just. I guess what I'm trying to infer is that there's more details that I think would be helpful to know if we're using this somehow as a comparator. I know it's not across the board, but I would appreciate knowing what those numbers would be. And my second thought was. I wonder whether or not the township. Has any oversight ability or the degree to which we can look at our new RCMP officers. And put them into some kind of box or category as to what specifically we wish them to do. I've never considered this before, but this is in light of the gang activity that's been happening. So. Prior to this, we've heard about cop per pop and and those kind of numbers. But I'm wondering the degree to which we have any oversight or discretion. To manage how we wish some of those new resources to be used in that direction. So that would be my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Backen.
Thank you, your worship. We can pull out the records for the 2020 year and we can provide those. So we'll make a note and do that. That's that's easy. As to the to the, I guess, targeting or the use of the resources. Have to choose my words carefully. We can request and suggest, but we cannot direct. The RCMP being a national force have their own initiatives. And because of the fact that they provide a relief in funding from the national scene, that we get 10% of the policing costs absorbed by the federal government. They have that residual ability of oversight, which is a bit different than, say, Vancouver City, where the police board can actually indicate the priorities and. Subject input, of course, and go along with it. So. Yes, we can suggest and request, but we can't direct. That's the only hesitation on that one.
Thank you. I I think that that would be, from my point of view, very helpful if we were able to massage that, because I think that's. A large part of the growing concern is that we are challenged with gangs and so to direct those forces towards. Managing that issue that we have. Thank you, Mr. Backen.
Thank you, consequence.
Yeah, I was also interested in that number that Surrey's got there with the asterisk. So thanks for. To councillor Ferguson for asking that question for me. But what would our rate be as far as historically what we've spent? On capital versus operational, if you were to factor that into into that percentage, like what? You know, I know we're trying to figure out a number today, but in if you go back, what what do you typically spend? On operations versus capital?
Your worship, I'm not sure I totally understand the question, but I'll take a shot at answering it. I think the question is. Our contribution to capital, where have we been historically? Historically, many years ago, I think we were, I'm going to use some numbers that are probably better expected percentages, but. At one time, we had a very robust contribution to capital 20 years ago. Probably the equivalent of 12 to 15 million dollars. Over the years, there's been ups and downs, and we've noted that we are traditionally challenged to maintain our existing infrastructure with our level of contribution to capital. So a few years back. There was, well, presentations and discussions had. And the result was we made a consistent attempt to increase our contribution to capital. And you see that in some areas such as facilities maintenance, but probably the most notable one was road paving. Where our road paving was very low, and then we agreed that we would. By Paul council policy, increase at the rate of $500,000 per year to create the base for road paving. This year, because it's a bit of a challenging year, we said we won't try to maintain that. We've taken it down to $250,000 per year. Which leads us then to our our total overall contribution to capital of about $8 million. And I say about because roughly half a million of that is being funded, I guess, from surplus, if you will. As a one time, just to try to make sure we maintain the overall direction. Where we'd like to get to is back in that $12 million range. That will still take a number of years. And that's for the maintenance mode, not for the construction of new capital, but for the maintenance mode. So. We continue our pursuit of that goal, but we've reduced our rate of increase to try to maintain that. And one of the ways. Of course, is trying to capitalize on growth. When it occurs, we could use that to to relieve some of those pressures. But of course, this is one of those highly volatile years.
Right, yeah, that that pretty much answers my question. I guess. When I see the Surrey number and then, you know, you factor in, there's, you know, adding $200 to each parcel. And then they're showing a list of things that they're going to do with that money. And I'm just wondering, you know, how can we? Clearly show that and if we do have, you know, sort of a number. But anyway, thanks for for answering that.
Your worship, just a quick follow up on that, because you're quite right. Both Abbotsford. Surrey and I believe Vancouver have a series of levies that they specify for specific purposes, such as infrastructure or rec centers or whatever it may be. It is an interesting challenge, because the the good news is it's very positive to be able to say the money is going for this purpose. The challenge is, though, it doesn't differentiate between, say, a condominium and a a five acre property, for example. I mean, it's got the same parcel levy. The theory being that the users, whoever they are, would use the infrastructure to the same degree. But of course, that doesn't hold true with the with the thought that property tax is essentially a wealth tax based on the value of your property. And that your property taxes go up based upon your, you know, your BC, your BC assessment determination of its value. So. There's pros and cons to each, but yes, it's notable that for communities our size are one of the few that have not gone down that path.
Thank you.
Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Through the through the staff question around RCMP again. Well, last year we did 10, and my understanding was that that got us back up to the level that we needed to for our population. I guess, first question, is that correct? And secondly, doesn't it take five every year now to maintain? That level for our for our population? Is that where the number five came from?
Your worship, the the recollection we have is that 10 brought us back into the range. And of course, you can argue about the ranges. But then the superintendent superintendent power indicated that. Between three to four would be optimal for the growth we're experiencing to maintain the police to population ratio. That we needed to continue to grow at a bit more quicker pace than we did before. We've we've looked at the fact that, you know, that may be three, three to four, but call it three. And we've also looked at the fact that, you know, the arrivals are not fully here yet. Is it realistic? But we're also mindful of the fact that some members of council expressed a concern about the current health and safety environment out there. And would a larger police force be helpful? Again, more of a statement than than anything else. So I believe that's where the five came from. So specifically, the superintendent's, I guess, preference would be in the three to four range, we'll call it three. But to make a statement, I think council was considering what the impact of five would be, and hence why the February first option is presented as it was.
Right, okay, that's helpful. You know, I guess, I guess for me. And, you know, at when we get to that point, I'm happy to make some kind of motion around that. But. I I'd like to see us probably reduce that number. I don't, it doesn't feel to me like we need to do five. We did 10 last year. If three to four keeps us and maintains that pace, I certainly want to see us go higher than the three. And in light of the fact that this kind of year of COVID and the challenges we're facing, maybe for one year, that number's two, I'm not sure. When I look at the percentage, I'm, you know, thinking that we need to, it would be nice to get below the 4.0. So for information for staff, that's where I'm sitting. And if we could adjust the RCMP to get there. That's probably where I'd be happier for this year in this budget. And we can certainly look what we do with RCMP in future budgets. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Woodrake.
Yeah, thanks. Just want to weigh in here a little bit. The 15, from what I recall, was the original request, maybe Mr. Backen through Mr. American. Can can confirm some of this, the original discussions, I think, about a year and a half ago now, where that. You've fallen a bit behind. So from what I remember from the presentations, about 8, 900 residents, Mr. Backen, per RCMP officer is their general request?
That's pretty close.
That's about right, yeah?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so in that case, I mean, if if we're just from my guesstimate, adding. You know, 3,000 residents a year, maybe four at the moment. That would be more than two or three, would be looking at, you know, three to four, four to five. So. You know, I'm a little worried that we, you know, sort of fall behind again. I'm a little worried that we, you know, sort of fall behind again. Um, or we have to revisit that that sort of officer per per resident. And maybe that that's not achievable. We need to maybe start to talk about that. Um, I don't mind deferring this to the next budget or two. Uh, we're not gonna solve that problem in a single day, but I I'll wait for the motion and we can see what that specifically looks like, but I I am a little concerned that that if we don't. Continue to at least keep up with population, that that we'll never ever get caught up. Thanks.
Thank you. That was a good points. One thing with policing is um, you can use that population as a as a good real thumb, but it varies with different cities and municipalities based on. Calls for service and uh, but yeah, we're busy, we're busy growing municipality, and I think those numbers are fairly close. Uh, certainly. The uh, the time that an officer takes now on calls, uh, I I think they're more, they're more involved and, um, you know. So it's it's hard to judge and, you know, what's what's the perfect one, but I think. I I appreciate your comments, Counsel Woodrake. I think, you know, going for the five is good. There's a couple of options here. We could look at motions. Certainly, the January twenty fifth. Does bring it down below the four with still bringing in five uh with some other uh avenues where staff can find some some room to make that work. So. That would be up to council if they wanted to move that for uh staff to come back with some options. Uh, but I'll continue the the dialogue. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Sorry, ma- maybe um, if you wouldn't mind, maybe we just go back to that uh chart so that I fully understand when you're talking January twenty fifth, five officers.
Back to that slide.
Saw that being higher than four percent, four point.
So there's, so if I can explain on February first, uh, that option that's today enforced today is four point four two, that includes five officers and. Without some service cuts that uh, you know, have been contemplated or having staff do some service cuts. Staff could do some service cuts. In certain areas, still bring on the five officers and go to three point seven nine as you see on the January twenty fifth. Uh, and then the January eighteenth. Uh, I think we've had zero officers increase. Uh, January eleventh had two, and January fourteenth had three without the service cuts. Uh, Mr. Backen is, uh, maybe you can just uh weigh in and uh give a little more explanation on that, but I believe that's kind of gives some options, some service service cuts you can get below four. With the five, and I guess those service cuts can can vary, but maybe Mr. Backen can uh explain it better.
That's correct, your worship. The the issue would be then um how we achieve the service cuts, and that's why we've uh, we've been very general because at this point, we we frankly haven't focused on that. We would have to be very cautious, and I think staff would have to be given some latitude to achieve that. Going to the conversation that we've just heard then, uh, one option, if you still want to maintain some police officers and not and minimize the impact on the existing. Uh, service levels, might be the January eleventh option, but perhaps with some additional direction that uh, that the balance not exceed three point nine nine percent. Uh, for example, that's about the midway, and then staff to go away and bring that back, that would probably be a combination effect. Uh, December fourteenth was earlier information, so the the modern day options really ranged from January eleventh to February first. And if uh, we're trying to add, say, two, maybe it's three officers, uh, the January eleventh uh uh model might be the place to start.
So, just if I can be clear, so January eleventh, um, shows a four point one four, but um directing staff to come back at three point nine nine. Uh, with with three officers is somewhat below the five. Uh, and then there's, so what's the, what are the trade offs there between that one and, say, January twenty fifth?
So, uh, the the trade offs between the twenty fifth were in some of the major impacts, uh, that was about seven hundred thousand dollars we'd have to find. Whereas on the eleventh, we're talking about roughly two points. So that's with two officers. So if you add an officer, it adds about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So we're narrowing the gap then. Uh, point one four um seems to me to be about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, and we could work the math on that. So that would mean we'd have to find some service reductions above two hundred and twenty five, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And likewise, uh, that would be with two officers. If you wanted to make it three officers that we had brought online, then we'd have to increase that roughly by a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. So about three fifty, three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. It just gives you some some perspective in terms of where we're at with the numbers.
Okay, that's helpful. Uh, so, um, if we went with, I mean, uh, I certainly here, we don't wanna fall behind on officers. So the challenges that they have out there, if we went with the three and directed to three point nine nine as an option to have staff come back with that. Uh, is that something that's doable, Mr. Backen?
No, that would be a a direction that helps us tremendously then, because we have some targets and we can actually begin to harden them, and we then. Limited the options, keeping in mind within the various silos being the utilities or or whatever else there may be, or even uh. Uh, that those being water or or even library, those silos can exist and still have more of a drill down of those as we go through those processes because they're still. It's it's possible because they're independent uh entities that we can uh, we can do that without affecting these rates.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Long.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that uh as much as I'd love to to bring it down below four, it sounds great, uh, and I preferred the three point seven nine. Uh, I can't minimize the the need that uh we need to provide our community with with adequate policing, and even. At the five officers, you know, we're not uh exceeding what what we what we probably need. In fact, we we're just getting closer to what's required, so. Um, I I, you know, we could put this out at some point uh to the public and say, okay, when, because when we do our budget presentations, we can say, well, we can. We can cut back here or something like that and see what the public says, and I can almost guarantee you that they won't want to cut back on policing. So, I'd I'd rather not go down that road. He's no, even if they could find another way to get down below four, that'd be great, but not not with the policing, in my opinion.
So, Mr. Backen, if we went uh, if you went back, just trying to capture what everyone's saying, if if some go back with uh three point nine nine as five officers, uh, is that too deep? For staff to come back with, there's uh, is there, we're compromised here between three, three and five, maybe it's four for three point nine nine, and it it still keeps the budget below four. It it gives us uh closer to the to the five, but it's a bit of a compromise where we're still trying to recognize the challenges that we have with the budget and services. And also with protective services. Uh, Mr. Backen, can you comment on that option? We need to come up, I'm looking for some way that we can move this forward and. That's, you know, compromise with with council that we can all agree.
And I I think the um, that process works, your worship. The the challenge we face is, again, it's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per officer roughly. And Sandra can correct me on my math. So, uh, to go up to three point nine nine provides a two tenth of a percent. Um, if that's partway, um, that means effectively if it was five officers, there's a three hundred and sixty thousand dollars get to fund. And oh, that's uh, you know, that's a significant amount. Uh, and we've talked about some of the options for that, so. The more clarity we can have in terms of uh where we can go, the better. Um, but for example, saying that we wanted three point nine nine. And four officers, well, that gives us the the parameters in there to actually advance something, and I'll just. Just pause for a moment to let Sandra comment if my math is anywhere close to being correct on this, because she's been uh moving the pointer around here. So Sandra, any comments?
The cost per officer is currently one hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars. So that's how we drove to the eight hundred and eighty four thousand dollars that we added to the current budget for five officers.
Okay. Okay, uh, so, I don't see any further hands. I think it's time to come up with something on the floor that we can.
As I do have my hand up there.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, oh, I'm sorry, I thought this was before. Uh, Counsel Whitmarsh, go ahead.
It's okay, nor nor really is from before, but this time I was good and took it down and put it back up.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, I I I think, you know, last time, if I remember correctly, staff came and, uh, you know, talked to us about one strategy to. To get there with five officers and below this four percent, and that was to look at our uh fitness centers that we operate at various facilities and. And maybe uh move out of that particular business, keeping only fitness centers where we had, uh, you know, either the ice arena or swimming pool, but not maybe standalones. Um, and uh, you know, I think it seems that, you know, I was certainly open to continuing that dialogue. It seems that maybe many members of council were not open to that. And so that's why we've come back with this February first of four point four two, because they were looking at some places and that wasn't uh satisfactory to many members of council. So in light of that, and if we're not willing to go down that path, which I certainly am willing to consider it, um, then, you know, then I think we should look at. A a budget of three point nine nine with three officers, and if the staff can somehow find a way to get to four officers, I'd be supportive of that. Because I'd love to see the number of officers increased, but I also do think we have to keep our numbers as low as we can. So I'm open to three point nine nine with three to four officers and have staff to come back with what that budget would look like. And um, you know, and again, I'm certainly open to the discussion around the fitness centers that were presented to us. I think that's a great place for us to consider saving. Uh, but um, you know, we have to have council move in that direction for that to happen.
Thank you. Well, certainly are some savings this year because of the the COVID uh. Direction from from our health officer and that they are closed, so there is, there are some savings that we're that we're um anticipating. I wanna go through this. Sure, I'll just, there's still some questions here. Let's just flush this out and then we'll come back. Uh, Counsel Ferguson.
Okay, I I have a question. Is it kind of like almost the elephant in the room? Here we are providing, uh, we're going through the twenty twenty one budget. And providing resources accordingly. What if there is a uh, a a quicker than expected return to normalcy? And delivering the service accordingly, uh, it would, is the staff prepared for that, or do they anticipate that, if I may, through the chair?
Mr. Backen.
Uh, your worship, we um don't anticipate it because of uh, even if everyone was fully vaccinated today, people's habits would not uh. Uh, change overnight. There would still be reluctance, because if it isn't COVID, there will be other concerns, as we've seen the impact and the nature by which uh. These viruses and things been spread. We're we're seeing, for for example, that that, well, COVID is certainly a real and persistent threat. The protections that are in place are minimizing some of the other traditional flu season things we're seeing still out there, but it certainly is less prevalent. Um, so, we don't expect it. If it were to happen, um, we would then be in a in a positive position in that, well, then if our revenues exceed their expectations. Uh, that would be very good, uh, because remember, even at this year, the restart grant is five point four seven percent or seven and seven point two million dollars. So, uh, the sooner we can return to normal, the sooner we can uh, uh, take ourselves off the support that provides us.
Okay, one more other questions regarding, I I thinking for the future, thinking future planning. Uh, I've said it before, I'll say it again, it might not be this year, or next year, might even be a few years from now. Is that E division building there, if the survey goes out of there, uh, that means to say it's gotta be recovered by the remaining RCMP officers. Unless the province or the federal government wanna help out, which I doubt they will. That's one question, and also as uh. The union has uh come into play with the RCMP, and it's fairly new, the last few years only. And whether that would have an impact as well. Those are questions that uh for the future, if I may.
Mr. Backen.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Police pricing continues to be a challenge. Uh, I mean by police pricing, there's two elements to it. Uh, there's a number of regional functions that are undertaken with costs being spread through the region. It's anticipated that um those costs would not uh, regional costs would not go down dramatically, and that would be teams like the integrated homicide team. I hit, uh, the integrated road safety team, uh, I cars and whatnot. Uh, so. You will see a a reduction, I think, in revenue to support them if you go from, say, ten municipalities to nine, but you're not gonna see them at ninety five percent of what their. Original capacity was. Uh, they'll be, you know, probably trying to maintain the hundred or at least maybe down a couple of points. So that puts some pricing pressures in place, and the second pricing pressure can't be underestimated, which is the RCMP members themselves have not been. Uh, without an increase since, I think, two thousand and sixteen. Uh, they're waiting, uh, as you may recall, they uh. They went through a bit of a a bargaining process or certification process, sorry, that'll lead some to the ability to bargain holistically, and that process is still underway. So at some point, there will be a significant catch up. We've internally budgeted for what we think that will be, uh, but of course, if we're. We're light, that's gonna put pressure on a subsequent year. Uh, we don't think we're we're overly heavy on our our predictions. We think, in fact, we're probably a little bit light. Uh, because the economy keeps changing, so we think we're well positioned, but those again begin to form some of the pressures on police pricing, both the. The lack of a, the loss of a potential co- a party to share the costs, and as well, the increasing cost per unit. And as Sandra mentioned, they're now at a hundred and seventy thousand. I remember the day when they were under, well, under a hundred thousand, so that just indicates uh the rising costs, not just to the members, but of their equipment, the cars. The weaponry, uh, all the things that go along with that. It's uh, it is a very expensive world we live in.
Yeah, and one last question. I mean, there is a chance, again, with the E division as well, is that some of the folks that are leasing building. That talk about the the I hits or whatever they are, that are releasing some of our ability, could go to that E division headquarters.
Uh, true, the um, no one knows the impact of what that will look like. Uh, at this point, it's gonna be something that can only be uh. Determined by experiencing the actual changes. They can do forecasts and projections, but they are just that forecast and projections.
Thank you.
Counsel Woodrake.
Yeah, maybe I'll just wait for the motion, uh, just to see specifically, but um, I just wanted to confirm again, Mr. Backen, uh. We added ten last year, and I think we got minus one. Was that, is that correct?
Um, I think we're at um, eight or or so, but again, it's it's very difficult because while they may arrive, others may leave because of other issues, so. Uh, the last information we had from superintendent power was about seven to eight range.
So what we're really doing then is if we add four or five, you know, we added, like I said, we added ten last year and didn't get them. I mean, simplistically, let's put it that way. So we can add five more and not get them. We could add ten more and not get them. So what we're really, what we're really doing is we're we're increasing the tax rate and and adding to the RCMP reserve, which of course. Um, you know, in theory, we could do what I suppose, we could take the money from the ten we didn't get, half of that could be taken out to fund. These additional four, and the tax rate can stay the, back at the three point seven nine, with that, and if they show up, we can deal with it next year?
Uh, potentially, but for the Surrey situation, uh, there's a couple of complications. Again, we don't know when Surrey may start freeing up members. That's number one. And number two, uh, is part of the um, the funding reserve uh that we are experiencing, we've already used to level off and smooth out the increase from the. Ten, again, it's less than ten, but the ten that we had scheduled to see arrive. So. We've actually used some of the surplus already uh by projecting it to future years, and I think Sandra might have a bit of a better handle on that to explain. How much we use for smoothing uh and how much uh we have left uh after that smoothing. So Sandra, do you recall any of those numbers?
Yeah, we have used the entire amount that we sh- we are projecting to have left over um from the vacancies. To smooth our numbers this year. There was that additional two hundred thousand that we took in, and I believe the. Yeah, I can't remember if it's January eleventh or eighteenth budget. So anytime we bring in officers now, um, we can look at. What we believe that ratio is going to be, and that percentage can help offset um some of the cost of that. Uh, that again is really deferring the issue to another year when we will potentially gain. Um, all of those officers and we'll have to make up that difference.
Okay, so let me follow up with that, because I think I understood that. But when I look at the slide, and I remember the slide, um. We've been ten, we've been authorized strength has been ten above actual strength for every year of that slide, if I recall. So we never get them. Um, at least, you know, never, you know, I was told to never to use the word never. So, um, you know, we we most, we're, for many, many years, we have not. Gotten them, so we could end, in theory, add five more, and the odds of getting them seem low. I mean, maybe Surrey's an opportunity. So, when you say we've already used it, so I wanna clarify that, because in the twenty twenty budget, I have the RCMP. Reserve of four point five million, and then as of mid-December, it was at five point three million. So it went up by a significant amount. So when you say you've used it, can you clarify what you mean?
So what I mean by that is for the calculation for the current year, the amount that would drop into the reserve has been used to. Smooth out the costs for the current year. Yes, the reserve does still sit there um from prior years.
But it went up, so for the, but for the calendar year twenty twenty, it went up by hundreds of thousands. Is that gonna happen again if the RCMP officers don't show up?
We're using an average uh to uh project what won't show up. And then use that to to smooth out.
Negatives get me every time. I didn't understand that, sorry.
So, we we took a historical view of uh the percentage of officers that show up or that we have versus uh actual versus. The requested, and we've applied that to assume that tho- that's the number of officers we will get this year. And then assuming that that amount would drop to the reserve, we've used that to offset the cost.
Okay, so, okay, I'm gonna start from, maybe I'll just wait for the motion, Mr. Merritt. Sounds like it's gonna burn anyway, but I I just wanna say, I don't really like the idea of taxing people. At a higher rate just to have it end up in a reserve, unless that's our intent. Um, and and that's what it sounds like is gonna happen. I've I'm sort of losing. Faith in the RCMP's ability to deliver officers as we request them. We always, we could increase the authorized strength by ten more and get zero more. So there's a process here that I'm still trying to wrap my head around, that I, when I when I fund something or council votes to fund something, I'd like to see it delivered. And I don't wanna tax people to just have it end up in a reserve. Thanks.
And your worship, just to clarify very briefly, because I think Sandra tried to touch upon it, but. And your worship, just to clarify very briefly, because I think Sandra tried to touch upon it, but I think what the option we're referencing did was it anticipated. Again, that there would be still some money that may fall to surplus, and we began to use that for smoothing. So. As Counselor Woodward suggested, that the numbers showed that there was a slight increase coming in. Again, we had the historical base amount. That has not changed. That's the surplus that was there. That has some some conditions attached to it. But more importantly, we looked at again this year, could we take more money from that potential surplus, the individual yearly surplus? And I think we did to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars. So when we we apply that going forward for twenty twenty one, we are looking at. Using almost entirely the projected new revenue from twenty twenty to apply to officers in twenty twenty one to therefore keep. The the rate or the amount down that we need to fund because they're not here.
I may I don't know if I may jump in there, Mr. Mayor, just.
Go ahead.
Just to clarify one more point, and then we can move on from myself. I think that's good. So there would be an option then with the, you know, five million plus or minus in that reserve. Maybe a little bit less based on some of the comments. That that we we could, in fact, request three, four more. You know, and we still have a lot fair amount of money in that reserve with not much plan to spend it, I don't think. So that if they somehow miraculously did show up, we could we could pull it out of that reserve. Now, is there some way for us to give direction to do that rather than. You know, if you just leave it at four point seven nine, and I think we could add the officers and could just direct that it can come out of the reserve. I'd like to know if that's an option for a motion, depending on what others have to say.
Yeah, Mr. Backen, it's it's a good point. So if we were to have a motion to, as I say, send this back at three point nine nine with four officers, are you able to incorporate that as a as a funding source? To I'm just using those numbers as an example.
Sorry, you're you're going. I like what you're doing. It's great. I just I would want to highlight the three point seven nine, keep that plus add some officers.
Okay, sure. So, yeah, I'm just using as example. So three point seven nine, three point nine, whatever council does, is that an option when you come back with us to us, if we give you that direction? And that'd be one of the options to take funding from.
It would be, your worship, but the caveat is we've already done that with some of the numbers. That's what Sandra's trying to say. So I'm not sure how much more we have left. I know specifically. From that projected amount, we've taken two hundred thousand dollars, and we've already used some for previous years smoothing. So I I'm going by recollection here. So for example. I think we had seven hundred and seventy five thousand dollars to smooth. We took another two hundred thousand dollars to make it nine hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. So if you will, we are staffing then by using the reserve for eight or nine positions or something, what it may be. So we certainly can try to squeeze that a bit more. We want to make sure we left the impression that this isn't a matter of hundreds of thousands. It's going to be significantly lower. Is that a fair summary, Sandra?
Yes, we we were using seven twenty one for smoothing of the ten, and we added another two hundred to that for smoothing.
So right now, we're using nine hundred and twenty one thousand of our projected twenty twenty surplus to pay for twenty twenty one officers.
Okay. Okay. So it's a lot. So I'm just trying to, you know, trying to form this motion, which will eventually come on the floor in in to recognize what Counsel Woodward has said is that. Certainly, that is an option that could be considered, whether it needs to be in the motion or not. It could be the motion could include for staff to consider utilizing the RCMP reserve. And that might that might satisfy that. I'm just throwing that out with the council on.
Correct, your worship.
No, your worship, no, I I I this is not what I'm hearing. So this is important that we get the the facts on the table. The two hundred thousand actually sounds to me e equals the one and a half offices we didn't get, right? So we asked for ten, we got eight and a half. They took the two hundred thousand that they that we didn't spend on that extra one and a half offices, if you could cut an officer in half. And that was used to reduce the rate this year. So I don't think I'm sure what I'm hearing, Mr. Backen, say over and over again, is there isn't any leftover money. Other than the surplus reserve, which is for other reasons. I don't know if we want to get into those details now, but they are, I believe they're committed funds for other things. So I I can't see that we can say to staff, well, use those reserves because staff have already used all the reserves. That they feel that they can use to smooth based upon the buildup of those reserves to the offices that didn't show up. So.
Yeah, you're 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 correct there. But I think motion would could be something like to consider it because there may like I heard Mr. Back also, there may be some room in there. So.
And I guess that's the question I have then. Is there room somewhere else? I mean. Can we can we stay with the three point seven nine, which is the number I really thought we were stuck on last last time. It was a happy number, sort of, to speak if there were such a thing. Now, and I don't want to get people riled up about recreation services and so forth, but I mean, we saw a memo today from. That you sent us about a conference call, your worship, that one of our staff took place. And, you know, then and with the comments about covid, no matter how many vaccines happen and so forth. The whole delivering of recreation services is going to look different, especially in this budget year. So can we look at more virtual? There was a suggestion of having virtual fitness classes and some other things. Can we squeeze some something out of a of another budget there? And and how did we do that before? There was a cost reduction, and I see a number three up there, but. I I guess it's really directing staff to find the money somewhere, but I I really don't think I think we've we've. Flogged the the idea of taking it from the reserves. I think we've negated that. Is that not true? Sorry to be.
No, I hear what you're saying. And so so what we'd be doing is is at least giving staff a direction on the percentage of councils content with. Number of officers, they go back, come back, and so there are some options, whether some of the things you've mentioned, Council Woodwards mentioned, and allow staff.
Mentioned what might be in the in the motion that you're trying to craft is a reduction from that five, and I don't feel comfortable with that. I think we should stick with the five. So I don't know how it'll play out, but that's the way.
And it might and it might be a four is the number for this year. So just saying to to get to the point where we want to go. So I've got Counselor Whitmarsh.
I'm I'm prepared to make a motion, and at least at least we can start debating the motion.
Sure. So what would your motion be?
Well, my motion is that we. Provide staff with the number of three point nine nine percent with four officers and direct staff to return with a budget and. The implications of what the implications might be of three point nine nine with four officers for twenty twenty one.
Okay, is there a second or? I I can't see hands, so somebody will have to mention that. And then we can make amendments. We need to. Second, my concert, okay. Counsel Whitmarsh, do you want to speak to it? And I'll go to Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, I mean, I I, you know, I'd love to have as many officers as I can, and I'd like to keep the taxes as low as I can. I think it's clear from. Mr. Backen that we can't have all of those things. And so I think the three point nine nine is a is a is an appropriate number. It's below the four percent. Something magical about that. I'm not sure why, but and it and it does give us four police officers, which keeps us in line with our growth. Combined with the ten that we that we permitted, this is money that goes into the budget. Whether we get them or not, that's another issue, and staff can certainly. Look at the reserves. I'm quite I'm comfortable with Counsel Woodward's suggestion of looking at the reserves, but only if staff thinks that's appropriate. But maybe they'll find some other mechanisms. It's not for up to us to find that. I think staff can find that. And so I think the three point nine nine at four officers is a good guide. Then I'll come back to us and we can then. Vote on whether we like it or not at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, Woodward.
Yeah, thanks. So I think unfortunately, there is a lot of bad information in there from Counsel Long, as I just want to get it clarified. He mentioned that we, you know, we funded ten and got eight, and that's just not maybe I'm just not maybe I'm misunderstanding something. I'm looking at a slide. From twenty twenty twelve fourteen, which showed Langley RCMP detachment authorized went up by ten. Langley RCMP actual went down by one. So we we funded ten and got minus one, at least according to that slide. So I don't know where this idea comes from that we. Funded ten and got eight. That's that's not the information that I've been given. So I want to clarify that again. That's just bad information. It's incorrect information. A lot of that money would have gone overflow into the reserve, as I understand it, and which is why it's gone up by that amount. So the motion, I think, is on the right track, but. It's going to be essentially unless we're somehow going to get these people, get these officers on the ground, it's going to be taxing people at four percent. To have it flow into a reserve, which I don't like that in principle. We've already funded ten and got minus one, according to this slide. So maybe if Mr. Backen can go through that one more time, so people can understand it. Maybe I don't understand it. Maybe I can get that explained one more time for the rest of council.
Is is Castle Woodward looking at the slide or another one?
Yeah, so just just to slow down a little bit. Certainly, Council, there's authorized strength, there's actual strength, and I don't think actual strength. Ever ever meets authorized strength because of a lot of variables. I know one of the variables in twenty twenty was depot. Where they do the training, had to shut down with covid and now they're playing catch up. So there are a few variables that happened. I'm not using that as an excuse, but I just say that. It 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 can vary from year to year, and I think that the issue we have to be concerned is is if this year, and I think Mr. Back has mentioned, Suri comes online. There will there may be an influx of we maybe get to full strength right right off the bat, which would be probably a first. But there's always that lag and for a variety of reasons. And but I just, you know, I don't have all the answers. Mr. Backen, do you have?
You're correct, your worship, and it is confusing because there's a there's a difference the RCMP draws between. Officers from depot, that's usually where they requisition them from versus vacancies that occurred throughout the year. And and what we were hearing was that we had a decent year in terms of officers coming in from depot even with covid. That's where the seven or eight comes in. But the in that impact is if you have other officers retiring or getting sick or moving on from your established complement. You can actually have a situation where your your new officers coming in don't actually increase your overall complement because a number of other ones had left. The difference, though, is when the officers leave, generally, they may be have a few more years experience. They may have some. Some senior experience, then they transfer other members in, and it becomes through a bit of a competitive process. And that can become a bit of a challenge because the processes can run, they're run independently of us, but are running all the time. So you may see a deficit at the end of the year, and then it may spike early the next year as they are able to transfer officers in. And a good example occurred in in Langley this year with the inspectors, for example. I think we we lost an inspector early. A new inspector came on, two inspectors came on, then another one has retired. There's a bit of a difference in, I guess, the the ten, the seniority, the tenure of the some of the the members, and. That's where the Suri situation becomes very interesting because of Suri were to actually make their change as a hard and fast time. We may say an influx may see an influx of positions to Langley for some of the non-depo positions, and that's where it gets to be very complicated.
Yep. So I mean, I'm just gonna sort of, so I mean, let others can come back and need to speak again if I'm if I need to. The the motion, the way it's been structured, I think unfortunately. It's setting that that four percent for the additional authorized strength, which may or may not show up. So again, we're we're to the point where we've already funded the ten there in the budget in the base. In the base rate. That's also going to end up flowing into reserve for twenty twenty one if they continue to to not end up on the ground. So I I feel pretty comfortable. I mean, I guess there's some risk associated with adding them in the RC all of a sudden for the first time, and according to this slide, the first time in five years, we're gonna. The two numbers are going to meet. It seems like a low low likelihood to me. So I I don't really want to tax people. In the current environment to just have it flow into a reserve. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. For long.
Yeah, well, I'd hate for Counselor Woodward to get bad information. So how much did go into the reserve? Let's ask that question. Because I think I heard over and over again that there there wasn't this huge amount that went into reserve from the the lack of officers. Was there is there a number we can say that went into reserve?
Mr. Backen.
Your worship, for that amount, again, we're not completed our year end yet, but Sandra, do you have any? Any under any projected amount based on our last quarter finances?
Sorry, I don't have that with me.
Your worship, we can try to to find that, but I think the I I don't know the number, but I can articulate it this way. We can take the surplus and use it, but for budget purposes, we have to actually record. The actual projected strength. We have to budget for the number of officers we're prepared to take, even though they're not here. What we do is we use the prior year surplus then to make that difference work, because one meets the requirements of the auditors. And the other one then reads the requirements of our surplus and reserves, how we use them. So council's making a decision, if you will, to use the the savings account to fund the operational expenses. For the short term, simply because that's going to be when the other officers arrive. So it does work. It's simply a matter of how much we actually have there, and that's the number that we can determine.
So we're actually still, we're actually doing that already from what I hear. So now let's go to the motion, your worship. So the motion, I think I heard it a little differently than it was first proposed. So we're not saying. Make it so. We're asking staff to bring it back and show us what it's going to look like.
That's right. So the motion would be three point nine nine percent with addition of four officers. And to and that and then that gives some good direction to staff to come back with what that looks like. So it's not approving it.
That is as a as a as a tax increase and a and a direction. It's saying, look at that and bring it back to the next meeting.
That's right. Is that that's where it's it's not really an approval. It's certainly saying this is where council is comfortable with. Make it work, come back, and then we'll we'll have that final approvals or approvals to take to the next level.
That's correct, your worship. We're looking to bring back a more holistic model now where it could still be amended, but we're trying to focus on an area that interests council. There's there's no point for us to pursue the December fourteenth models, obviously, that had no interest for council. So the more we can narrow it, the better we are. So council can then amend it or approve it or.
Okay, thank you. Conseguence.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep up with this formula. So I'm hearing Counselor Woodward and what he's saying, is there any way to sort of? And I you've probably addressed it, but to, I mean, nobody wants to to, you know, have people pay for something that they're they're not getting. Tax wise. So is there any way to word the the motion differently, or is there an amendment or something? Or I mean, I'm. I'm good with the three point nine nine, and I think four officers is certainly better than two. And I guess I'm wondering where. Now, we talked about recreation services and all that, how that numbers impact or that, you know. So, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the information I think with this direction staff can bring back to us. One thing to bear in mind, and I hear what you're saying, we put the tax in to fund, as Mr. Backen said, we still have to have the envelope to fund for these officers. When they don't show up, that money comes into the next budget. So in effect. We're we're not taxing for it because we're still using, you know, last year, it's one of these carry forward, every year it carries forward. So had it not been there, would be taxed, we'd have to increase the tax, but it is there. So.
Okay, I I just wanted to get that clarification.
Yeah, so Mr. Backen, you know, it's it's just to clarify that. That, you know, we're taxing for it. If it doesn't happen, sure, the tax is there, but we're if if we didn't have the carry forward from last year, we'd. We still have tax for it, is what I'm trying to say. Mr. Backen.
That's that's correct, your worship. We are very we're working very diligently to ensure that we don't go over budget, that we're always slightly under budget. How much we compress that is always the game. Where I think at my last calculation, ninety eight percent. That's just a rough number. I'd have to recalculate it, but when you're talking about a hundred and fifty million dollar overall budget. You know, that that difference could be quite significant in real dollars, but we just can't squeeze that so that we go over budget. That causes a whole other world of of concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Richter.
Okay, three point nine nine percent tax increase is not acceptable this year. What else is not acceptable is that we funded ten police officers last year. We didn't get them. Where did the money go? We got a five point four seven million dollar covid grant from the government. We should not be having any tax increase this year. So as much as I want the extra police officers, and I do, but I voted for that last year. I don't think I should have to vote for them against again this year. I think that they should just be showing up this year, included in the budget that was approved last year. So three point nine nine, not acceptable, not even close to being acceptable. And so I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I mean, I I think that this, you know, this provides staff with some some direction. And it allows us to consider what they come back with. There's lots of options for staff. There's nothing in here says staff. Can't find other places to reduce. They can't look at the R RCP reserve as a way to fund it. None none of that and none of that said here. There's no. Specifics. It's asking staff to come back with what they think is the best way to get there. This is a parameter of three point nine nine and four officers. We could decide when it comes back to the table that we don't want three point nine nine. We're going to go to two officers or whatever we want. This just is another step of further direction. So. You know, I'd encourage I'd encourage council to give this direction and move forward so that staff can do the work and come back, and we can start to wrap this up.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson.
Well, it sounds like there's an awful lot of questions that still need to be asked, and folks are still. Looking at all the particular items and issues regarding this budget. And I'm just wondering if this is a motion we should be considering. After we've got a number of questions answered. And I think I'm glad it's been put forward. So at least we're looking at a number, and some members of council have said they agree, others have said they don't agree. But others have said we need more information, and we need to pursue some other things. So. I was wondering, Mr. Mayor, if where we're at with this motion or whether you you need to get more information from staff or from council.
So Counsel Ferguson, thank you for that. The this motion will give staff that direction to come back with that more information. But they it gives them a parameter that council can is is working with. So certainly, this isn't an approval of a three point nine nine. It's direction for staff that council is comfortable as a whole. Maybe, you know, it's varies. We have to come to some sort of agreement here. It's direction for staff that council is comfortable as a whole. Maybe, you know, it's varies. We, we have to come to some sort of agreement here. Um, but council, um, as a whole, would send it forward to staff to come back with um, some of the answers to the questions. Uh, we talked a lot about the police reserve, how that can work into it, some of the other issues, and then come back with something. Council is not, this vote is not to improve the tax increase, but it certainly is a strong direction to, to staff.
So let me make this absolutely clear, if I may make this absolutely clear. We're not voting on three point nine nine. We're considering it right now. It's like almost a a motion to consider, and that may change based on more information come forward. Is that correct? Either you're, you or the staff?
Yeah, I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Backen. Mr. Backen?
Yes, that's correct, your worship. It'd be analogous to a, a motion to consider because what this says is take away this, this framework and come back and tell us the implications, what would that look like? And of course, that's where council can amend it or disregard it or restart something in a different direction. But it advances the process as we've, we've gone through, uh, was it five meetings on the topic, and some of them shorter, some of them longer. But it allows us to start to push it towards some ultimate bylaws. So it's a, it's really to frame something to bring it back so council can further deliberate. But a bit more specific than we've done before with the five options, we'd be drilling down whatever option council directs us to come back with.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, thanks. Can I have the motion read back by the clerk to signal the voting?
Yeah, Mrs. Bauer?
That staff be directed to provide council with a budget for consideration of a tax increase of three point nine nine and including four police officers.
Okay, so I think that's kind of what I heard Mr. Backen say earlier, not the most recent comments, but the comments before that. This, this is direction to come back with a finished budget of four percent. So I, I, I'm, I'm a bit confused with some of the characterations, characterizations that this is just to get some information. That sounded like a motion to present us with a four percent budget uh, funding these officers in the, in the way that I had some concerns with. So then it's going to come back and then I'm going to be trying to amend a finished budget. So, um, I would, I would like to actually do an interim step. Um, so we're going to amend this to provide us with a, a second option, which is to stick with the three point seven nine with maintaining that officer count funded by reserve.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, just, just so I get a clear sense, an amendment to, to add an option. So to bring back the option three point nine nine with.
No, three point seven nine with the, with the, with the officers that are in the motion funded from additional reserve usage. If that makes sense? It's what, that's what I've been commenting on the entire time.
No, no, I, I hear you. And the whole idea is to get some directions. So we have some options to choose from.
Because what I'm hearing is that we're, if I don't, if I vote against this, well, I want the additional RCMP funding, but I don't want, I don't want to tax people for services that are could go into reserve. So I would like to stay at the three point seven nine and, and full three.
And it might be something if, if we give that, I'm just, you know.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, as opposed to me trying to amend the motion and have it down, right? Let's, let's look at both options.
So it might be something they come back, staff can come back with something. It might be between three point seven nine and three point nine nine, but we're giving this direction as a parameter. That's, okay.
Direction in the motion.
So, um, how, so the amendment could be that, I just want to get it clear. You move that, um, the amendment to this motion, say that staff consider a three point seven nine percent tax increase and it was with, still with the four officers?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. So the, so they consider three point seven nine, or could you say three, between three point seven nine and three point nine nine?
Yeah, I, to me, that wouldn't be achieved with service reductions. It would be achieved with additional usage of the RCMP reserve.
Yeah, with, okay, thank you. And that's second by Counsel Richter. Okay, so on the amendment.
Uh, your worship, is that four or five offices?
Four, staying with the four, but just looking at a three point seven nine. So staff have some parameters. They can come back three point seven nine, three point nine nine. It gives, if, if they come back and say, well, at least we have some options. Um, and I think that's what this driving to. Mr. Backen? I know you're the ones who can be tasked with, with bringing this back to us, but how does this, um, I know the motion's on the floor, so we're going to go through it, but I'd just like to hear from staff.
No, that, that's right, your worship. I think what I'm, I'm hearing is there's, um, two options to consider, three point nine nine, um, with the four, with the implications of that are, with the balance of the budget. The other one's very specific, it's three point seven nine, and how much, and the use of the RCMP surplus to fund that. Um, that I think we can calculate because in that way we can actually expand upon the use of the surplus already. And if we have to go into not just the twenty twenty surplus, but previous year's surplus, if you, if you will, that's always the challenge. We're looking at that. Now, Sandra, are you okay with that in terms of the characterization? Or would you like to add anything or clarify anything?
No, I, I guess, just to rephrase, so we would use, there's, we would use four officers for the entire year and fund that entirely from reserve. So no increase is what we're looking for.
RCMP reserve.
Yeah.
And come back with that. Okay, Counselor, I lost track on my list here, but I think Counsel Richter, then Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I, I, I want to go back to three point nine nine to put four officers in that we already put in last year. Like, it's like we're double paying here. I don't even like three point seven nine. I seconded this motion because three point seven nine is better than three point nine nine. But I'm probably not going to support it because in a year where we've been shut down for a fair part of the year due to COVID, we've had to close facilities, we've gotten a five point four seven million dollar grant from the provincial government. We should be able to get through this budget without any increases. Where did all the money go that we weren't spending? Like, not getting the police officers. Where did that money go? So I'm, I, I really do not support a three point seven nine or a three point nine nine, and definitely not a four point four two. Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I, I don't have a, a real issue with the amendment. And, and to me, it's not much different than the original motion. The original motion was inclusive of allowing RCMP reserve to be used. Uh, this added motion means that they can only use RCMP reserve. Um, and the percentage is slightly different. So really, it's, it's very similar. So I certainly am, I don't mind the amendment. Doesn't, uh, I think that's fine. Now, just so for clarity, uh, the three point seven nine on January twenty fifth was inclusive of five police officers. Uh, not four, that was five. Um, and it was also five officers on February first. The difference was that we didn't have the recreation budget.
Other service reductions.
Pardon?
There's a variety of service reductions to look at, and that's one of them.
Well, the primary one was where they looked at the fitness center reduction, offset it, and that we agreed wasn't going to happen. So that's why it's back up to four point four two. So the January twenty fifth, the three point seven nine did include five officers. So this is an adjustment from that as well to down to four. So I, I will, I will support the amendment. Uh, I don't see it much different than the original motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to call the question on the amendment. All those in favor? And opposed, if I could hear your names. Co- Counsel Richter's opposed?
And I'm against spending reserves.
Okay, so Counsel Long and Counsel Richter oppose the amendment? Okay, so now we'll go on to the main motion as amended. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed, if I could hear your name?
I'm opposed.
Counsel Richter opposed, okay? And Counsel Long, okay, so that.
Yeah, I, the mayor froze.
Yes.
I'm sorry, the phone just kabobulated. I'm just back now.
Okay, okay. So I'll tell you where we're at. Uh, we just, we just had a motion that it, it carried, um, without you, I guess it carried six to two. So basically what the motion is, is that staff are to go away and come back to the next meeting?
No, I know that part. Just, just about when we're ready to vote, the thing kabobulated.
Okay, so did you want to?
I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Of sending it to staff at three point nine nine. That was, um, Counselor Blair's.
Yeah, and then there's an amendment of three point seven nine. So it's basically between three point seven nine and three point nine nine. Yeah, so it's, it's three point seven nine to three point nine nine, uh, utilizing, um, reserves from the police. And so that's part of that motion. So staff are still going to go back and come back, and it may be somewhere in between that, or maybe three seven nine, or maybe they say it's impossible.
Okay, when I beeped out, when I beeped out, it was three point nine nine.
Yeah, so it's, it is still in there, but it's, it's more of a range.
So it changed to three. Okay, so it's just giving it more range. Okay.
Maybe staff can, can explain what those reserves are there for too, because I heard Mr. Backen say they're committed reserves.
So, so that's the, that's the information that'll come back at the next meeting. I think that's, that's what the direction is, so. Prepare that presentation.
I'm sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Counsel Kuntz, you have a question?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to mention my, my computer went down too. I think it was the internet thing. So just, um, I don't know how much longer we're going to be, but.
We're pretty much, I think we're pretty much complete this meeting. We'll, we'll be terminating it and then we convene the other ones. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to terminate.
Termination.
Counsel Davis and seconder. I see Counsel Kuntz scratching her head, so that's a second. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed and carried. Thank you. Uh, we will now, uh, thank you very.